Your attention please, before we start our meeting tonight, I would like to have a moment of silence for Miana Roach, who was a student at Peachland-Pocden Elementary School, who unfortunately lost life recently. We are deeply saddened to share that one of our students, Miana Roach tragically passed away last week. On behalf of the Board of Education Administration, we extend our heartfelt condolences to Mia's family and loved ones during this incredibly difficult time. As we reflect on this loss, we kindly ask that you join us in observing a moment of silence to honor her memory. We also want to acknowledge that tragic events like this are never easy to address. It is important to understand that sometimes, due to the sensitive nature of these situations, we are unable to release information immediately. The safety and privacy of our students and their families are of the utmost importance. And as such, we must wait for guidance from law enforcement and permission from the family before sharing any information. We appreciate your understanding and patience as we navigate these challenging circumstances. And we will continue to support each other in our school community. So at this time, would you join me in a moment of silence? Thank you. I want to welcome our staff and visitors to tonight, along with those watching via the Internet, on YouTube or Facebook. And thank you for your interest in our school system. Topics of our agenda are available for you for your convenience. The Board has voted to amend our agenda. And at this time, we're going to take up new business, which is C-01 Kaboom Contract for P-P-E-S. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to begin the discussion on that.
Dr. Truman, I'd like to move that we accept this contract proposal.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on this topic? Want to take just a moment to thank the Peachland-Pocden PTA for their hard work on this and making this happen. This is a wonderful opportunity for the children of Peachland-Pocden. And we're glad to be able to work with you. At this time, I think that it would behoove us to just briefly say that as we have looked at the contract that was presented to us by Kaboom, that contract was a public template contract. Just for clarification, that contract that was issued by Kaboom was a public template document, which means they give it to governmental agencies, they give it to non-governmental agencies, they give it to volunteer organizations. It's a template. And anytime you look at a document such as that, there has to be adjustments made to it so that it fits our responsibilities. And the Board of Education has to do due diligence because we have a responsibility to protect Anson County Schools, and we have a responsibility to protect Peachland-Pocden Elementary School. And we have a responsibility to try to protect the PTA. And so that document had to be vetted by our legal counsel before we could sign anything or move forward. That was done on the 21st, on Friday. The document was released on the 24th and was signed on the 24th by Ms. Shepherd, signed on the 25th by me, and also signed by Kaboom on the 25th. So everything has moved forward on that document.
So we're just awaiting Board approval tonight, if the Board chooses to approve that. And so I stand with my motion.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor of approving the Kaboom document as written, please signify by saying aye and raise your right hand. Opposed, same sign. Right, Ms. Shepherd recused herself earlier on as the President of the PTA. So I have a motion, a second, and a vote. The Kaboom document contract that was originally signed is now executed. Other agenda, and we're at item 78, Public Comment. So this time, we have one person signed up for public comment, Ms. Holly Stegall.
Good evening. Thank you, guys. That's awesome to hear about Kaboom. So we're really excited to hear about that. Can you all hear me okay? Okay. Okay. So a lot of you guys do know me. But for those of you who do not, my name is Holly Stegall, and I'm a family physician with Atrium Health. However, most notably for you, I am a product of Anson County Schools and have a child currently enrolled in Peachland-Pocden Elementary School. I'm here today to share my disappointment and my discouragement regarding the events surrounding a new playground for Peachland-Pocden Elementary School. Our PPS, PTO have worked very diligently over the past year to secure funding for this project. Fortunately, the great news is we did receive that funding. However, we've been met with what feel like roadblocks from a district level along the way. Most notably for me, and my biggest concern, is the lack of transparency. It's this lack of transparency that creates a great deal of angst for me as a parent. And I think for many of the parents and grandparents that have children at our school. I want to remind you that our children have been without a playground for the past academic year. And it was removed last year during incredibly pivotal time during our EOGs. Research shows that in order for a learner to be successful in the classroom, they need to be able to get outside. They need to be able to enhance their imaginations and enhance their creativity and their health. I want you all to hear my love and my consideration because I have been an advocate for our school system against and despite much opposition for many years. And I know that the reason I am where I am today is because of my family and the support from the educators from within our school system. But I want to remind you that our children are going to face a lot of inequity in their lives. But our job is to help create an environment that says you matter and that you can and you will be successful and that we will support you along that way. We are saying that we value that growth mindset over a fixed mindset. And a playground is part of this. As you spoke on already, Dr. Truman, this past week's events are not lost with me. And they really do highlight the need for us to have a sense of security for our children, despite what they're facing at home. And that includes a place to play and to just be a kid. And our children need that at our school. I've got some great children with us today. Can y'all wave? These are all first graders at Peachland-Pocden. And I want you to see that the motions that you're making tonight, they're impacting them because they're going to be our leaders. And they need you to advocate for them. And they need you to be fully invested and in their lives, in their education. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Stegall. Dr. Stegall, our principal, would you come forward, please? I know. I realize that you and I have already discussed the expectations for the PTA in school and the expectations for Anson County Schools because we had to clearly delineate whose responsibility was what. But when is the projected installation of this?
June.
June. So we hope to have this in place by June.
There are three proposed dates and windows that we've got to work with Kaboom to find the best fit for everybody. But there are three choices for three different weeks in June.
Okay. And as you hear more about that, please keep us apprised.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. At item 9, chaired report. At this time, I want to ask Mr. Corey Ross if he'd come to the podium. Mr. Ross is our Safety Officer for Anson County Schools. And he also is on the committee that works with DOT. And we're in communication with DOT about our new middle school. And just, is there any additional update you can give us regarding the egress and out of Anson Middle School at this time?
After the last meeting, the board meeting, I did reach out to some folks that were part of the initial study that was conducted about the roundabout and the turn lane at the new middle school. I did get some feedback from three members that were on that team. They are willing to meet and sit down and have a conversation, you know, to look at some other options that were presented. I mentioned something to you before this meeting started, that some things that were put in place that you want to possibly look at some other options, like the 45-minute stagger start. I'm going to present that to the team when we meet to possibly look at other options. But the feasibility study that was released in March of last year, it said that, you know, there wasn't enough traffic flow in that area to do any kind of expansion work that we were looking for previously. And a lot of that had to do with the 45-minute stagger start between the middle school and high school that was put into that plan when that feasibility study was conducted.
Thank you. And let me point out that if we followed the recommendation of a stagger start or stagger dismissal, some of our students wouldn't be able to leave Anson High School till much, much later in the day, which means they'd be getting home much, much later in the day. So as we communicate with them, maybe we can help them understand that that will not work for us, that we need to look at another means. I'm not so sure they're aware of the access road that we want to build between the high school and the middle school and that will accommodate the buses. We are already putting aside resources to be able to do it. We need a timeline and that type of stuff. But the plan that they're using won't work for us. And we've got to let them know that don't base it on that study because that study is inaccurate. It doesn't meet our needs. And request, as you continue to do that, a new study if necessary.
Right. And they have a willingness to meet. You know, the folks that responded back to me, you know, they, all three, had a willingness to come together and have, you know, further discussions. You know, they just shared that study with me that I was not aware of. And when I read it, that's what I came up about some of the decisions that were made in March of last year, or the recommendations that were made in March of last year.
Any of my colleagues, we'd like to ask Ms. Ross a question regarding the DOT. Thank you, Ms. Ross. Now, again, I'll do it tonight. Mr. Callen, welcome. Glad to have you with us. I think Dr. Stegall, I mean, Dr. Ratliff and I go visit you tomorrow night. 6:00. So if you want to watch more of this, tune in at 6:00 to the Anson County Government webpage. Do we have any further questions for Dr. Ratliff that are appropriate for open session?
I would just like to get, I would like to get straight on the presentation we had last month about the monies that Dr. Rosebar presented to us. How much of that was new money? And how much of it is recurring or old money that we always get? Because it was good number sums in there. And can Ms. Drake address that?
The two that I know are new are the Plasmin Games and the Golden Laker.
Okay, I was just kind of hoping we got a lot of new money.
Would those dollars be tied to $1? Or would they be state dollars? State dollars? Those are all the comments I have under chaired report. And so I'm going to give it to Dr. Ratliff for the superintendent's report.
So just a couple of items on here. And I'm going to defer to other individuals in the room to help with any kind of questions or comments that need to be made. And just momentarily, we'll have Mr. Baker make a presentation to our first grade leaders who are here from PPS. Thank you for being here. We really appreciate you being here. At this time, I think it would be appropriate to have Mr. Baker, I know you've traveled away. So instead of having to listen to me about the middle school project, you can, we can have Mr. Baker here give us an update. And then when we meet board leaders on April 14 for our budget work session, we'll have a spreadsheet of information about how expenses are going. Ms. Drake will be prepared to share that with you. We thought it'd be appropriate for you to get an update from Mr. Baker and us tonight. And then on the 14th, if it pleases the board, we'd like to go into further detail about the finances at that time. So, Mr. Baker, thank you for being here.
Thank you, Dr. Ratliff. Mr. Truman, members of the board, staff, it's been a long time since I've been up here. And I really appreciate you guys inviting me today. Is this still? Yeah. But what we have done, actually, I have had the contractor, J.M. Coe helped me with this, or excuse me, Lightner helped me with this presentation. And it's just a little quick presentation of the progress. We have made a lot of progress. I don't know if you guys have gone by and did a drive-by of the site, but the site's really looking good. Can we go to the next slide? In your handouts, you can see, it's kind of hard to see up on the screen. But the fine grading has been complete. The building pads, even the future sixth-grade wing has been graded. The fire lines, all the taps, the domestic water has been completed. We've got the fields, the ball fields back there, fine graded. It's not seeded or anything like that yet. But the ball fields, as you can see in this overall picture, back in the back right-hand corner of the picture, this site lays out perfectly. It really does. Also, the access roads coming into the school, they've been rough graded. And we are still, like I said, waiting on DOT's final decision on the turn lanes. Right now, I believe we do have a deceleration lane coming into the site, but no left turn lane or anything like that at this point. Next, with these aerial photographs, if you can look at the upper left-hand corner, and you can see in your handouts, that is an overall picture. You have at the front, the two classroom wings, left and right. In the center, you have the admin area plus the media center. In the back, you've got another educational wing. And then at the further back, that you see the little pyramid up in front, that's the gymnasium. We do have future locker rooms and things designed for the back. And hopefully, you know, in the future, money comes available. You can build those restrooms and locker rooms in the back. Next, in this slide, you can see an overall view of the floor plan. Left and right, as you can see, are the two classroom wings, the seventh, eighth-grade wing. The center in the portion in the, that's the admin and the media center. In the back left, back center, you do have another basically vocational music area. The grays that you see up there are future expansion, sixth-grade wing and the locker room area. The blue in the back, like I said, the gymnasium, that's going to be a beautiful area. And then on the upper right-hand corner is the EC, the cafeteria platform area. And I've got some additional pictures of that and the kitchen area in the back right. Next, these are little progress pictures inside Area K. Next shows the classroom wing. Same thing in Area L. If you can see in the upper right-hand corner, we do have a security vestibule. Up in the right-hand corner, you'll see the secondary doors. As you enter into it, you'll enter into a safety vestibule that those doors will be locked after school takes in. They have to go through the admin area in order to get into the school. Next, next you have Areas A, which is the gymnasium, which that ceiling area is going to be a very nice feature. Back in the bottom left is the media center. You can see the arched window in the back that actually looks back into an enclosed outdoor area that they can use in the media center, any type of activities outside. And then the right-hand side is the, I think that is part of the groundwork for the cafeteria kitchen area. Next, a look ahead, the next four weeks, building in Areas K, L, and M, and you can see that in your handout, will continue finishing drywall. Exterior brick will be started on that. Areas B, D, E, and F, the roof trusses will be completed, continued framing inside. Areas A, which is the gymnasium, complete the structural roof and the roofing actually started. Areas G, H, and J, which is the, I think that is the kitchen area. The slab will be placed. Rough end plumbing is almost completed. And you'll see that in a couple of more pictures, how that's actually progressing. And then site work will continue to go as indicated. There's one thing on the site, as you guys well know, we've had some challenges with the site, wet areas. But all that has been mitigated, and I think we're good to go. Another aerial picture, you can see where all of the workers are parked down there. That's actually going to be parking space for the teachers, visitors coming in. You'll see an access road down the bottom left that you'll circle back around to go back out of the school. And you can see up in the upper right-hand corner where they're prepping the slab for the cafeteria and the kitchen area. Next, another picture, you guys have seen this before. Say, yes, sir? That is correct. Yes. That is correct.
That comes up on the right-hand side of the school and goes to the bus parking lot. Is that correct?
That is the, right now, we do not have that design, but that is the projected wish list. Yes. All right. Another picture, aerial picture showing the back left of the gymnasium, the two classroom wings and the administration area. Down at the bottom, you can see that is going to be future sixth-grade wing. So that has been graded, rough graded. Right now, that aerial will be grassed, which will be a nice little playfield. There'll be curb and gutter around that so that, you know, you can use that for whatever until the sixth grade's built. Next, that's another aerial picture of the gym and also showing the cafeteria kitchen. You can see that little arched area. That's the actual platform. We don't call it a stage anymore because we'll have to have curtains and things like that that right now, if you call it a stage, it's got to have all kind of other features to it. But right now, it's a platform which is about three feet above the cafeteria level. Next is a picture of the gymnasium. They're getting ready to roof this. Hopefully, within this next month, you'll see that area finished roofed, placed. And another picture of the overall site. You can see the high school in the very back right-hand corner and then the ball fields in the left. Same thing there. That is just another picture on the right. As you can see, those two are the entrances. You'll see the arch coming into the main entrance of the school. The entrance in the back right is another egress or inner entrance. The, what we normally try to do is, and this is up to the staff, is we will offload kids at one of those positions once the school takes in. The only way to get into the school would be through the front, through those arched ways and through the front entrance. And this is the cafeteria. That's a little platform. Yes, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Back to those arches. They will be covered?
Yes, ma'am. Oh, yes. That will have another, basically, a pyramid roof with brick arch going across it. Yes, ma'am. That's just the frame that you see right now. Yes. And you can actually drive underneath that to be protected from just like the rain that we just had pass through here. So, and a lot of it. Next, in this picture is the, yes, I'm sorry. Yes, ma'am. Of the gym, I think we are, if I'm going to go back to memory, I think we're right at 800, something like that. Eight, 800, something of that nature. But I can double-check to make sure that we've got those numbers correct. Now, that's just the seating in the, that's not counting the basketball playing area. That's just seating each side. So, but I'll double-check that to make sure. Any other questions before I, yes?
Very back of the school in case we eventually want to have external bathrooms.
Mm-hmm.
You know, if that's been done.
As a matter of fact, I think it has been stuffed out because we've got future, because the sewer actually goes out there for future locker room areas and stuff. And I think that area has been stuffed out. But I'll verify that to make sure.
I'd like to ask Mr. Baker.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Has the same thing been done for the future sixth-grade wing?
That sixth-grade wing, there's no additional plumbing that's there. But we do have areas that have exited the existing building that we can tap back into.
So that could be done pretty easily without like pulling up a lot of concrete or?
Absolutely, yes. And we have done this in other areas, which, you know, once funding is appropriated, that wing will pop up just like a.
Also, you spoke about the fields. Are they like the same regulation size that we are currently using for middle school?
They're actually regulation size of middle school. They're not high school. They're not high school size, but for middle school. And we're still looking, funding for the actual finish of the, you know, areas. And hopefully, we'll get that pretty soon. So, and as a matter of fact, and before I go to that, we are still on budget. Everything looks good. We've gotten rid of any rock, any wet areas as far as grading. That was the main challenge that we had. There's still a little bit left in allowances contingencies. So we feel good that it's going to be within the budget. Picture us, any other questions before I move on? Yes, sir? No? I can get you, I can leave this, and I can get you as many copies you want. You got it? I'll make sure you've got it? Yes, sir? Very good. All right, yeah, I'll leave you the PDF. Perfect. All right. What we have here pictured is the cafeteria. The platform up there, you can see those little arched areas. Those are steps leading up to the platform area. You don't see the kitchen portion. That is just the cafeteria. We've got ramps on both sides going up. We will have a toilet, single toilet down low so that if any student does have. so that if any student does happen to, you know, get a little sick, they don't have to run back up to the main toilets. So there is one there, so. And another picture of the aerial, any comments, questions, that might be it. So, comments, questions? And again, I appreciate you guys allowing me to come here and I'll be here every month if you need me to. I know Dr. Ratliff's been keeping you up to date, which is. He's, yes.
Over here, can, can you get it done next week?
Next week, you know what? Somebody said if we had a magic wand, we could do it and some people do. Schedule wise, it is scheduled to be completed by the end of January 2026. Can, you know, depending on weather, things like that, you know, I don't think it will be done by December. But I know surely it'll be finished before January, so, thank you. Any other questions, comments?
Yes, as far as the kitchen, I assume, make sure I'm correct, all new appliances?
Brands spanking new.
Will we have an opportunity to do training with our staff?
Yes, sir. Absolutely, your food service director, she's gone through it and looked at the plans, got the equipment that you guys like. And once the kitchen is complete, there will be a time and a field hands-on session with the staff and with the manufacturers, so yes, sir. And I think most of that equipment is analogged, not digital. We are running so many problems with digital, so it's all analog, you can just turn a dial and good to go. Questions, comments?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Just, I appreciate too, Mr. Baker, you've given us realistic timeline, you're right, we had updated the board and December was, it was September, November and December was, was the very best that we thought. So, so the plan very, the, the board very wisely is well aware of that time and they're making wise decisions about and realistic decisions about when we would open the school. Thanks again. Just a couple of things, and then I'll, I mean, and if there's anyone on the leadership team, if there's anything that you would like to share, please do so. Couple of things I want to mention as a reminder, when it comes to student learning, our emphasis here has been and will continue to be that our focus is on student learning and developing leadership. Everything else falls under that. So unless this board were to decide that it needs to go a different direction, those are the umbrella items. And if you think about those two items, everything falls under those categories. With student leadership specifically, our focus is on all. I had a professor one time tell me all means all and that's all all means. And I appreciate this board's focus on all children and will continue to, to make them our focus. With that being said, there's a lot of growth that's already taken place. We have, you've heard from Dr. Roseborough and others, some encouraging news. We're not, we're not saying that we're at a point where we need to be by any stretch. We knew that this is going to require some incremental growth and change. A lot of that is just in general mindset about how it is that we're going to positively approach and strat, and have strategies and goals set forth so we can be more than just looking at being off a low performing list. That is a low bar and that should not even be in our vocabulary. I know that's our, that's our initial goal, but in our vocabulary includes words like sustainability, excellence, exceeding growth expectations. And my word has been to you and will continue to be that we are to be a beacon in our region. We are not to be anything less than that. So the expectations need to be set and more importantly, need to be held. And that's what we're going to do and that's what we have been doing and will continue in that vein. So I, I wanted to make sure that we just re-clarified that. And then there's something I'd like to say in a moment about where we can go with that. Also wanted, our principals, and I, I always want to do this, I try not to embarrass our principals and our leadership team here at the central office. But I got to tell you, there's a lot of sleeves rolled up. So you may not see that on the face every day, but I can tell you that the leadership team here is quite capable. And, and I've been heartened by that and I, and I appreciate in my role, my role is absolutely no more important than anyone else is in this room, especially those guys right there, our first graders, they're the most important. But I would, second grade. Thank you, Dr. Stiegel, I appreciate that. You can see I need all the help I can get, thank you very much. Second grade leaders, you're the most important. And by the way, you're our bosses, so don't get the big head, but you'll always be our bosses. You'll always be my boss. So having, with the principals and the leadership team here, I just, I want to make a public comment about not just their hard work, but their focus. And we've had to have conversations, Dr. Roseborough and I had to have that conversation. We had that conversation today about sometimes we've got to slow the train down and we understand that. We would like to do everything at once and we can't do that. But we're, we are working aggressively and we are looking at areas of priority, particularly with student learning and how we can capture the capacity that our students who are absolutely second to no one anywhere. Our, our, it's not about our students' capacity. It's about some other things that we need to generate with the adults and that we, what we can do to come alongside our highly capable and motivated students. And we need to be a part of that. Our journey as a school community recently made a comment to some folks who are in this room, including one of our commissioners who's here tonight, that we are Anson. So this is a we thing, this is not a, this is not a diversion, this is not a path that one person takes responsibility for. And then the next one over here has, oh, we don't have that responsibility. I'm going to make one editorial comment that that is not just ineffective, it's not fair to our children. Because we are Anson County, we have the responsibility of doing, developing student learners and student leaders. We. And so that's not a lecture, it's just a reminder that everyone in this room and in our entire school community, each person has the responsibility to work together to make sure that our citizenry is strong minds, capable beings with compassionate hearts. That responsibility rests with the adults in our school community, including Brian Ratliff. And I take that very seriously and I know everyone in the room takes that seriously. Why am I saying that, Brian, why are you saying that? Because we are on the cusp of moving forward in ways that maybe we haven't experienced. And it's time for us to see the possibilities become probabilities and be set and held as expectations for us at this point going forward. We have a long way to go and we will not get there unless we take steps forward together. So that's not just funding and what it's human resource, it's mentoring. It's, it's maximizing the benefit of the resources that we do have and it's for us to manage our own egos, to make sure that we're all about doing one thing. And I feel compelled to say this, we are here to serve, not to be served. We are here to serve, not to be served. And that is the mindset that we need to have. When we, and when we have that, as we have that, and there are lots of people here that do. And I'm so proud to be a part of a team that cares so deeply about our students and their families. And we need to continue that momentum. All right, enough of that editorial. The, the, but thank you, leadership team and everyone, but thank you, leadership team for staying so focused. I also want to let you know, board, this is a little, a different outside of the student learning piece, but it's not something that we've talked about. Because the updates that I've gotten from DPI, well, actually from the state board when I have my monthly meetings with them, has been very positive about you and your leadership and the prospects of, of growth. And having, as Dr. Stiegel said tonight in her comments about a growth mindset. And they've been very complimentary of you, so I wanted to pass that on. The, and we'll, I'll continue to have those meetings, the data's going to speak and the data may not be everything that we want because we'd all like to wave that wand and say that the data is going to suggest or going to actually declare that we're at a certain level at every school and every child and that's unrealistic. But what is not unrealistic is the fact that we can, that we're growing. And, and that, that remains to be seen, what that's going to look like unfortunately as measured by EOGs or standardized tests that we take. And what I mean by unfortunately is because that's one measure, that's a research person in me, but is that that's only one measure, an indicator of our growth. And sometimes we, I know Mr. Adams, you and I talked about this when I first got here and he was very helpful to me to understand the multiplicity of variables that come, you and others. But I just remember our conversation about the multiplicity of variables that exist in our school community that we are experiencing tremendous growth in. And we have such prowess and we have such quality, so we need to capture that. So what I meant by unfortunately is sometimes it makes it difficult because what we, what you see is only by the measurement of standardized test. And, but I just think that contextually as a school community, instead of deciding that, that we are rock bottom based on just that, we need to look realistically at where we are and all the other factors that come into play and continue to have the momentum built and sustain that we can, that we can exceed all those things I mentioned before that I won't repeat. So I, I do think that we have support, I think we have support from the state level. I think there's, there's a heartened attitude about the fact that, that in Anson County, that our lights are starting to shine, they're starting to come out from under the bush. And I apologize if that offends anyone. But I just think that our children and our families are going to start shining. One of the things that, from a board leadership standpoint, again, I want to applaud you and thank you for your focus. Our collective ability and capacity, your collective ability as elected leaders is tremendous. I also know that, that, that you wear a great responsibility. And so, that's not lost on me either, thank you for that phrase tonight too. That that's not lost on us, the fact that, that you bear that responsibility. And to whom much is given, much is required. And so when we move forward, I do think that it would be important for us in budget sessions to really start to have some focus, we're getting ready to have one. Maybe they look a little differently than what we've done before, maybe that we start thinking about things and ways in which we can again maximize the resources we have as opposed to taking things that just face value because they always have been. That we start channeling our decision-making, make them informed and that we start making decisions based on those priorities of maximizing student learning and building leadership capacity in our school community. That's what all of our resources need to go toward. And I know that you believe that, or you wouldn't even be here, I don't think, I wouldn't think. I would suggest to the board that based on what I just said, in future, whoever the players are involved in this, is that we do something that, that I think is paramount. And I would just throw this out, board leadership, for your consideration as that, and some of you have talked with me individually about this, but I think it'd be good for our public that we in Anson understand the importance of maybe possibly engineering, at least socially to begin with, engineering and, and being intentional about board retreat activity and some real intentional strategic planning that we need to do together as we move forward. So I just wanted to bring that up tonight that I felt like that, that, I just want to get that on your radar screens and for us not to lose that, that it's probably time for us, for our, for our second graders and for all of our almost three, over three thousand students that we make that a real priority, that everything that we do is very intentional and smart and with a lot of energy behind and a lot of collective decision-making so that we, not I or just one person, that we are starting to make decisions or continue to make decisions that are going to be not just a buy-in. It's not just about selling a product, it's about coming together as a, as a group of leaders and make, being really intentional about the things that we can get the best benefit for our students. Again, I'll stop there with that, or end with this, that our students in this county are second to none. And I think it's important for us to start behaving that way. First with your superintendent. So we need to start behaving as if, and believe, not just believing, but behaving as if our students are second to none, because they are. Thank you for enduring that and that's all I have. Unless there's any, is there any updates or any questions about what you might see on the agenda, board leaders? Or questions that you might have for the leadership team tonight, I don't want to put them on the spot, please be kind. But, but if there's something you feel like you'd like to know tonight, if you would, regarding student learning, please do so at this time, thank you for your patience.
I have a quick question, Dr. Ratliff. Last, I don't think mine's working now, can y'all hear me?
We'll give you mine, but.
I know that you mentioned the Super Saturdays, do you happen to have, and last board meeting, you said there was a couple of dates prior to the school ending, do you have those dates?
Thank you for asking me that because they had to be changed and, and that was just inadvertent. It was really based on the mentorship services that were coming to us and they had chosen April five. But then we realized it filled the dreams and, and that was just an oversight, it wasn't intentional at all. It was really just trying to marry up the schedules for those providing the services. So we have, and then we also have an SBCC event that we really feel like that we need to rally around that day. So we have rescheduled that, that unfortunately, or a little bit of a concern is it's going to have to go to May three, on May third will be our first one and probably our only one for the end, until next school year.
Are community members, I know we met, are they still like asked to be involved in that? And is there any like training that we need?
Yeah, the, well, there are two separate things, great questions. There, there's one in terms of the mentorship and those are for those who signed up to be mentors, that's really in the schools. So that doesn't mean that someone in the community, because we have some great people here tonight, we got a couple of rascals in the audience, she knows who I'm talking about, yeah, look at her. We have people in the community that may be able to help and assist in that regard, but we are, Dr. Brown has already done the training with the mentors. That's a really, it's a quick training that lasted, I think, because I had to be out of town, but for about two hours, I understand. Is that what I understand correctly? He gets carried away like I do, but that, that has already taken place. We will generate information for the school community to be a part of that in terms of they can look. they can look, see and be observational. But as we go along, there's going to be lots of opportunities for just not only the people that we met with that you're talking about, but also additional people in the community to include other leaders, civic leaders, clergy, people like that that can be a part of. You remember Dr. Brown talking about the human library and there'll be some other things that there're going to be that I don't have all the activities yet. So great question, but yes, there can be other people involved in that as we move along. But that first Super Saturdays, May 3, thank you, you rescued me on that one. Thank you. Any other questions, thoughts, anything, Dr. Roseborough, not, not that you have to, but, or others? Is there anything that you would like to share? Is there any updates that you would like to give tonight at all? Anyone? Let's see. I'm sorry?
I have one for Dr. Roseborough.
Those are, those are on the consent agenda, so you'll, you'll notice that she had asked about cords, I don't know if, that she, if there are any questions about high school cords, Dr. Roseborough and I can provide explanation. I know you may have seen those, but it's because it's on consent, I don't want you to, I don't want you to feel like that that was overlooked. So if there's anything that you have questions or about the school calendar adjustments, please do so tonight instead of going back later and going, why didn't they give me an opportunity? So thank you for bringing that up.
I, I just had a quick, quick question. So it was about this time last year that we talked about having an alternative school and having its own identity, own, its own school code and one thing. And I know that this summer we said, let's put it on hold, we weren't quite ready. Where are we in that process?
We, we are getting ready to meet with, as a group, for the, the entire alternative education program. We've actually met some with SBCC. There's lots of ideas floating around about that. I do, thank you for asking that as well. I do not see us at a place where we're ready to have an individual school yet. Part of that may be a housing issue and also we need to develop our programs. I, we can certainly have those conversations for future meetings, so I'm not suggesting that my recommendation would be that we could never have, go ahead and have another separate school. But I just frankly, I think it's more of a phase in. You remember we talked about phase in? And what I mean by that, I can only speak for myself, is that, that you layer programs and where we're meeting the needs of students and it's not just disciplinary issues. We have lots of things to talk about for alternative ed, credit recovery, some, some, maybe some temporary support opportunities. So what we are doing as a staff is getting together here in the very near future to talk about what those possibilities may look like. So while that might sound a little frustrating because we did say that we wanted to put it on hold, I am not just saying intentionally put it on hold again, but I think we need to look at it comprehensively. I think that we have some programmatic needs that we need to take care of first before we just say we're going to have a, a new alternative school. And you know, I have some thoughts about where it might be housed as well, so, but those are just Brian's thoughts, so that may not be a part of the timeline, but given what Mr. Baker shared with us, we still need to have utility and again, you know, that's a conversation I've had a little bit with Mr. Caudle, Caudle and other people, but I know that that'll be something that we, I don't want to commit the board on that or the, or the commissioners, but I do think that that building site, I think we need to have future discussions about that. So I'd hate for us to be too, I want to be proactive, but I'd hate for us to be too preemptive in making a decision about coding a school and having a separate school, alternative school at this time when we still have some programmatic needs. And really, it's not even programmatic needs, let's get to the, the real matter, is that we have student needs that, that we can develop programs to, to meet their needs in the current situation. I do foresee that, that our community is going to be in need of a separate alternative education school, but I just don't think we're there yet, Ms. Davis. That's just my opinion.
And that's fair. I just knew that we, as a board, we had voted and there, there's actually a motion so that, Dr. Truman, that might be something that as a board in our, our upcoming meetings, we need to move to table or move to take that, that motion off and just because we do have a, a motion that, that we agreed to do that. The, the other thing...
Very prudent, by the way, very prudent.
The other question that I had in being very, I'm trying to be very sensitive to the issue, but in, in light of recent tragic events and knowing that we only have a limited number of social workers and guidance in our schools, are we looking to maybe be able to address that with ramping up some additional social workers or guidance personnel in our schools?
Sorry, we haven't specifically said that there needs to be an uptick in terms of volume. We have had just sidebar kind of conversations, not real and with real intentionality, just to be extremely frank and transparent about that, is, is about maybe how it is that we can utilize what staffing we have. I think a funding source is, we'd have to have some funding sources in order to do that, or maybe take some considerations with our current allocations, our staffing needs and maybe utilize them a little differently. I know that's ambiguous and I apologize, it's just, I did that intentionally because I don't have a specific answer or a plan to do that. Is it a need? Yes. We do have some other, I know Dr. Mary Ratliff couldn't be here tonight, but there's, there are some other support services and grant opportunities that we may have that will be helpful. But we, we may need to, we need to look at what we're offering with the resources we have, first of all, just to be real honest with you about that. And then we do need to look at maybe increasing the, the number of staffing that we have. It's very hard. The principals in the building are gratuitous and as nice as they can be about sharing those resources. Some schools have greater needs than others at times, not just based on size, sometimes it's size, and then sometimes it just happens to be some particular needs at a particular time. And our principals are gracious to each other, but I know it's frustrating if they can't have the consistence, the consistent presence there in their school. So I do empathize with that and that is something that we need to talk about and then really, Ms. Davis, that we probably need to talk about from a board retreat standpoint. Dr. Truman?
If you don't mind, I have a question for Dr. Roseborough and I want to say initially, I don't hear well and I'm not exactly sure that the question I'm asking you is fair, but in one of your previous presentations, you indicated that while we had the same amount of money, we were tutoring less students. Did I hear that correctly?
What we said was that it was targeted, so we had to use our student scale scores to make sure that sixty of those students were invited first to tutoring and then we gave the principals the option of if they wanted to invite more, they could, but we had to make sure that our funds were used effectively for those students who needed the most according to their scale scores.
Thank you, yeah. And, and again, having been a principal, I know what you mean when she says targeted students. We identify those students that we can make the most improvement with and hopefully give them a little more resources to bring them up to state standards as quickly as we can because as we make that end run, as we get ready for the end of the year, there's a lot of tutoring, there's a lot of reteaching, there's a lot of individual instruction that takes place. And I was just afraid I heard it wrong. Okay, thank you. I, I want to echo something that Dr. Ratliff said and just put it on notice, that I genuinely believe we have very capable students in Anson County schools and that they can achieve at high levels. I genuinely believe that. I believe we have a very capable teaching cadre in Anson County schools and that they can achieve at high levels. I genuinely believe we have a good principal corps and that they can lead their schools the right way to make the right things happen. Folks, we are on the edge, we're on the verge, like Dr. Ratliff said, let's double down, let's decide what works, what works effectively, let's do more of that, what's not productive, let's do less of it. Also, in taking, double, just going on your question about the alternative school, you've got a magic number of 100 that, that we always have to factor into it, but I would love to see Anson County schools start a credit recovery program, a credit recovery program that starts early in the 10th grade, 11th grade, 12th grade. Students start falling behind, we get them individualized instruction. We don't let them fall behind. We, we take the initiative to make them better. We have to take responsibility for that. We have to make that happen. They're not going to. We have to make that happen. And I genuinely believe that's possible. The last thing I want to say is to, to staff and to Dr. Ratliff, as we approach this budget on April 14th, I think that's our, still our first meeting, let's add to it, not just the discussion of what we have to have to make the buildings work, let's also look at what we need to do to improve instruction. What are some things that are working that if we do more of them, if we allocate resources to them, that it will help us, it will help our children? I would like to see our budget discussion move somewhat into that direction as well as the nuts and bolts and how much electricity it's going to take and how much water it's going to take and all of the other stuff that goes along with it. I would like for us to start allowing our budget to reflect what our goals are. So at this time, we're at item number 12, action items. Under the consent items, we have A01, the personnel report, administration recommends the approval of the personnel report, budget amendments, administration recommends approval of the budget amendments. We have a sole source justification form and I think that's for chemistry and for physical science, is that correct? We have that, administration recommends approval of the sole source justification form. We have a revised 25, 26 school calendar and the discussion on graduation cords and endorsements. Do we have a motion from a board member to approve the consent items?
Make a motion.
Do we have a second? I need a second to approve the consent items. Hearing none, I think that since we're looking at the personnel report and some other items on there, we're going to have to go back into closed session tonight after this and find out what our concerns are. All right, at this time, we have no old business, we've already handled new business and so we're at the calendar items. Are there any questions for or requests for clarification of the calendar items? Hearing none, at this time, I need a motion that we go back into closed session to address some of the issues that are related to the consent items. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to go back into closed session to discuss personnel and property. Any, any further discussion? All in favor of returning to closed session, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign? Folks, we're back in closed session. Thank you for coming tonight.